March 22, 2021, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Colonel, we welcome again saying thank you, God. Lord God, thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, continue to give you praise and honor in the things that you're doing in this city. Lord God, continue to bless this city. Continue to guide us on this council, Lord God. Continue to guide our mayor as we continue to try to do the right things. Lord, we thank you for our teachers and our students, Lord God, as they get ready to go back to school on April 5th, Lord God. Lord God, we ask that you continue to cover them, Lord God, that they will continue to strive in education. Continue to cover our fire and our police and our medical workers, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres. Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, eight present, zero absent, two in chambers, and six on Zoom. Mayor?
Councilman, nice to see you. How's it going, everybody? I wanted to give a report for this council meeting. I want to thank Councilman Dave for letting me come up. And if the council has any questions when I get done, I have no problem answering them, obviously. We received word about a week ago that stimulus package recently approved in Washington, DC, under President Biden, and the Democratic Party Control Congress gave $53 million award to the city of Hammond, which is unbelievably great news. You know, there were other communities that got, that received more money under the stimulus package. It was based on population, demographic data, poverty data. Hammond had a great award. I know our school city received, I think, $48 million. I think that's amazing news. Obviously, you know, this money hasn't hit the coffers yet, and the statutorily, there's only certain things that you could use that money for, like infrastructure projects, streets, sidewalks, water, sanitary, things of that nature. Replacement money for money that we lost during the pandemic is a big part of it, and we could prove that we lost millions of dollars during the pandemic. So right now, as far as replacement money goes, we were throwing around numbers earlier today saying, let's say that we could prove that we had $13 million of revenue loss last year because of COVID. I think we can do that with a straight face. And if we did that, what we would plan to do is take the $13 million out of the stimulus money and put it into the equation that we all approved through the council, which is 62% of the replacement money will go to the Capital Improvement Board, 15% of the replacement money would go to Mayor's Gaming, 15% of the replacement money would go to the six council districts, 4% of the money would go to the rainy day fund, and 4% of the money would go to the gaming advisory committee with regard to replacement money. Once we're done with replacement money, the rest of it will be subject to capital projects. You know, we have a number of things that we're talking about, and obviously, the Capital Improvements Board is going to have a lot to do with that. And I know the council has three representatives on the Capital Improvement Board, so in total transparency, I just want to let everybody know that money hasn't hit yet, and when it does come, we have to know the rules. And I think it's in our best interest to approve replacement money as much as we can, and then we can get some projects going right away. You know, I've been talking a lot when I come to talk to you all about how we spend backwards now. We had a meeting earlier with Megan. There was four council people at the meeting, and I asked Megan about our cash balances right now in the city of Hammond. She said we had about $18 million, if I remember correctly. That was the number, right? $18 million that's there. It's in the bank account. It's being spent, but you know, right now, it's not out of the coffers yet. So that just goes to prove right there, we never had cash balances like this when we did it the old way. Now that we're spending money that we have in the bank, it allows us to build up these cash balances, and it's good for our credit rating. It's good for, you know, a number of reasons. But we're about two weeks away from supplying you all with the next quarterly gaming report, which will budget even more money to Capital Improvement Board, Mayor's Gaming, and all the things of that nature. So the end of the quarter is coming up. I imagine by the next council meeting, we should have our report ready for you with regard to first quarter 2021. I anticipated having the wholesale settlement agreement from the water litigation ready for you at this council meeting. However, it's a very complicated lawsuit that was settled, and submitting it to writing is proving to be more challenging than we thought. There's a little quibbling over minor issues that are going through right now. So the long and the short of it is, we do not have the wholesale rates ready for first and second reading today, as I thought we would. I imagine by the next meeting, we'll have it ready for you. We talked last meeting about the credit card charges at the water department. It was a little bit more complicated than we thought, but it is in the process. I don't want the council to think we're not paying attention to you. There is going to be a charge on credit cards transaction, and if we're not going to charge our residents, which is the will of the council, we have to pay it. So there will be a charge, though. So like, you know, if somebody's not paying it, it doesn't mean there's no charge. If the resident's not paying it, then it's going to fall on the city to pick up the accumulated charges, which could be millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars easily. So we're in the process right now of working out the best deal possible for the Hammond Water Department and with the will of the council where credit card charges will not result in charges to the residents. This has proven to be a little bit more challenging than we thought. I think as of this moment, the credit card charges are going to be picked up by the water department as we speak. We're working through these issues and trying to get the best deal we can for the Hammond Water Company. We've gone through a reorganization of the water department business office because of the increase in workload. They have twice as much workload as they're used to having because we bill every month now as opposed to every two months, which doubles the amount of paperwork that they do. Munster Hammond Pedestrian Bridge, I talked a little bit about that last time I spoke to you all. I had a meeting with Dustin Anderson, the town manager of Munster, and their city engineer, and talked about how we could partner together on that project. We would like Munster to participate financially since it is a border project. We're hoping that they will donate towards that project like the Little Calumet River Basin Authority donated $1 million towards this project, which is wonderful. Your former colleague, Dan Rippey, has had a lot to do with that, and I want to thank Dan, a former 5th District City Councilman, for helping us with that. Within the last two weeks, we cut a ribbon on the new ADA accessible entrance to the Hammond Civic Center's fitness center. We did that during the disabilities awareness ceremony. It's really nice. You can get into the fitness center without going downstairs, which makes a lot of sense, obviously. But we had to put a ramp in. Obviously, the civic center was built in the 40s, and not a lot of thought was putting it into ADA accessibility in the 1940s. Hammond Firehouse Number Five is still shuttered, suffered permanent damage because of a fire that took place next door. The amount of water and ice that built up in the structure that we put out bled into the basement of Firehouse Number Five. I'm no expert, but I think it's permanently damaged. We do, we are working with the union. We are working the fire administration, trying to figure out if we could do it better in that part of the city, and to be continued on that. That could be a direction for stimulus money down the road, trying to figure out a better way to do fire response in South Hammond. Just a couple days ago, Councilman Mark Koinski and I were in the 1st District, cutting a ribbon on a new $4 million Luke's gas station that includes a brand-new car wash. Everything on the inside is brand-new. It's a really big, it's right there in the former 35 acres, but the Collins family just put $4 million into it. It's really, I mean, I'm no fan of gas stations, but that's a beautiful gas station, and it was a big investment. So really nice. St. Joseph's Church in downtown Hammond just welcomed Bishop Robert McClory to Mass on Saturday, which was nice, having the bishop in downtown Hammond. And last but not least, I had a meeting today with the RDA CEO, Sherry Ziller, to talk about transit development districts. Right now, I know Councilman Emerson's in front of me. We are not talking about South Hammond at all. Right now, we're just focusing on Gateway. We figure Gateway is less controversial. When we start talking TDDs in the 4th, we have a lot of issues to work through, and I want the councilman there with us when we do that. We just figured, let's focus on the Gateway first. It's least controversial. So, but we are eligible to have a TDD in the 4th District as well, and it could help us develop Calumet Avenue and 165th and things of that nature. So we're working on the boundaries right now, and obviously, the council should probably be briefed on what these districts are. But it's basically, gives us opportunities to seize increment on income tax, property tax, sales tax, things that we don't receive a portion of at all right now. We'll be allowed to receive it in these districts under this new tool. Seems to me, there's very little downside and a lot of upside for the city of Hammond. It's like a Tiff district on steroids. And Munster's going through a process of doing a TDD right now. I know Chicago's in the process of doing a TDD. Gary's in the process of doing a TDD in Miller, and ours, first TDD, will be around the Gateway Station, which is Goslin, Chicago, downtown Hammond, down to Harrison Park, in that area of the city. So that's my report. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Go ahead, Councilman Emerson.
That is good news, Mayor. But I did have a question about something I read in the paper this morning regarding the wetlands. Our supermajority in Indianapolis are, it looks like it may pass. Does that affect the city of Hammond at all around Wolf Lake? Or aren't those wetlands up there?
Councilman Emerson, I would be lying if I told you. I saw the article. I didn't read it. I'm not aware of anything happening that affects us right now.
The Lake County Surveyor is not happy.
Oh, yeah? Well, you'd probably know a lot more about that than I would, Councilman, because, you know, your son happens to be an excellent surveyor. He probably knows a lot more about that than I do. And I'm not pleading ignorance. I just...
Okay. And I think it would enable them to build on wetlands.
Oh, yeah?
Which really, there's not many left in the state, and that's what I think they're fixing to do. But we'll see if it passes. It's going to the Senate, I think.
Great.
It goes back to the House.
You know, Councilman, you reminded me, Councilman Warple, I'd state one more thing while we're here.
Right.
I would be remiss, and I thank you for bringing up Wolf Lake. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Wolf Lake and the swans and the geese. And a photo published a couple weeks ago had about 10 or 12 dead geese and swans laying on the ground, and, you know, they were located throughout the channel at Wolf Lake. And The Times and the local media and the Chicago media did a story alleging, you know, dead geese, Wolf Lake. Obviously, the geese got sick from the lake, and it's dirty, and like, these geese are dying because they're drinking it. And that, in my gut, there's no way that I thought that for even a second. Wolf Lake is a very clean lake. We just recently remediated the lake, you know, within the last 10 years. We used federal money and cleaned it all out, cleaned the trench out. It's actually a really clean lake. We do tests on it regularly. So anyway, when we heard about that, and then obviously, the birding societies were getting very concerned that there was something in Wolf Lake that was killing these waterfowl. And we did, through the Hammond Sanitary District, multiple water tests on Wolf Lake. All of them came back within specifications of the EPA. We did an independent lab, gave them the same tests that we performed on the water in Wolf Lake, and the lab confirmed our results. Nothing concerned. We tested the water at George Lake, which is a little bit more iffy because there's a superfund right over there. That water came back clean. We took our X-ray fluorometer. It's a brand-new device that you helped Hammond Department Environmental purchase a few years back. I asked one of the employees of Hammond Department Environmental Management to shoot 21 different locations up and down the channel and see if there's anything that we're missing. Every 21, every one of them came back clean. So the bottom line is, these geese, these waterfowl are dying, but whatever's killing them is not from the land at Wolf Lake. It is not from the water at Wolf Lake, and that's been confirmed. So, you know, and then there was this weekend, we had people that were very good-natured people that care a lot about birds. They go out there and they have signs about "clean up this lake" and "McDermott stepped down" and stuff like that. It's beyond ridiculous. It's not, whatever's killing these birds is not coming from Wolf Lake. That happens to be a place to hang out. And, you know, so anyway, I appreciate the councilman bringing that up because I forgot to mention the birds at Wolf Lake. And that way, that lake is clean. I'm going to be in Leon's Triathlon, and I have to swim a mile in that lake, and I'm not phased about it in the slightest bit. I'm going to jump in there. I'm scared about the cold, and if there's something you could do about the cold water, that'd be wonderful. But I'm not worried about the quality of the water at all. So that's my report.
Just on that issue alone, I mean, it's been my experience from members of my family that worked in conservation that those dead birds are going to wind up at the southernmost point of water, and that, you know, they could have came from anywhere.
There's Gibson County in southern Indiana had 176 dead birds from avian, the avian flu. Chicago's not talking about this a lot, but the inlets, the rivers and the lake inlets in Chicago, tons of fish dying. A lot of people think it could be from the harsh winter, you know? I don't know what it is. I'm not an expert in waterfowl, okay? But I could tell you that the water's clean at Wolf Lake, the land is clean at Wolf Lake, and if it wasn't, we would not allow people in there. But it's clean. So, and I wanted to point that out because we may have to repeat that over and over again because some people are trying to talk louder, like, oh, no, it doesn't matter. You tested, the birds died, you know? We just need to be louder than they are and tell them with fact. So any other questions, Councilman?
Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Mark Koinski. I'm sorry, Councilman Koinski.
Okay. I believe that the DNR has the dead birds and will get us a report at some point about cause of death. So that will be public when they're done and give that to us.
Yes, sir. Agreed, Councilman Mark.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they want to ask the mayor or comment on? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Warple.
Item number three, reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Motion's to accept the minutes from March 8, 2021, to be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes and place on file by Councilman Spatelli, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move the play, play, pay claims from March 3, 2021 through March 17, 2021. Claims number 1073 through 1378 in the amount of $8,514,852.70.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims by written, as written by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent. The claims pass. Item number four, public hearings. There are none. Or was that item number five? Item number five, public hearings. There are none. Item number six, committee, wait a minute. I need my glasses.
Communications.
Communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Koinski.
Wanted to update residents of the 1st District, especially in Robertsdale, about conversations with the industry. I spoke with Chris Foster at Cargill today regarding the humming noise that comes out of the plant. And we'll be talking with the plant manager, Mr. Lawson, tomorrow as well about that issue that's been frustrating a lot of residents because of the intermittent noise and hum that happens all along in Robertsdale in the day and especially at night. And then also, the city later in the week will be meeting with Cargill to further discuss the issue to see if we can find a resolution to this frustrating and aggravating humming that occurs out of the Cargill plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Have our updated COVID numbers. For 46320, there's an additional 30 cases from last meeting. For 46327, additional 19 cases. 46323, additional 28 cases. 46324, an additional 50 cases. And 46394, an additional 27 cases. That takes us to 154 new cases from our March 8 meeting. As we see, the numbers are trending down, and I really hope it's because people are getting vaccinated. People have learned to continue to wear their masks and social distance. The weather is getting better. As we can see, we have lots of people out at the parks. But until we get all the way out of the pandemic, let's continue to wear our masks, wash our hands, and social distance as much as possible. Vaccinations are available for educators now anywhere. There was a mass vaccination clinic done at Maryville High School this past weekend that I attended myself to be vaccinated with tons of people there. They're constantly dropping the number by fives. We're at the age of 40 and over now, as well as educators, to go any location. And I believe they'll probably be dropping again to 35 on the next Monday. So as you get, you waiting and you're getting your turn, make sure you go to rshot.inna, well, in.gov to get registered for your vaccination. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on their communications? Anybody else have anything on their communications? Communications are now closed.
All right. Mr. President.
Oh, Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to just go on record and send my condolences to all the families of the victims of the killings in Atlanta last week. You know, we've seen the uptick in hate crimes across our country over the past few years, especially those targeting our AAPI community. So just want to share my support. And as always, you know, Hammond is a very diverse city, but I know that we can also be doing more to protect just people within our city. And so I know as a city council, we're exploring just different possibilities and trying to figure out ways to bring us all closer together. So just want to call for everyone to just kind of forget about the silly differences that set us apart and try to do what's right for our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on their communications? Anybody else have anything on their communications? Communications are now closed. Item number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. Council as a whole will be bringing out ordinance number 21-09.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I'll just continue with the other two that I have. Crime Watch. I would like to announce that tomorrow evening, which is March 23, at 6:00 PM, there will be a virtual Crime Watch meeting on the Hammond, Indiana Police Department Facebook page. Anyone is welcome to attend and make any comments or questions that they may have. Each of the community policing officers will be giving the crime statistics for their area, and that begins at 6 o'clock tomorrow evening. I would like to thank the Hammond Police Department for the self-defense workshop that they held this past Friday. 24 women came out and learned safety measures to protect themselves and how to be aware of their surroundings. So thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you to the women who came out to learn about safety. Now that the vaccinations, the COVID vaccinations, are kind of in full swing, I did get notification that there will be a meeting at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza. That will be on June 9. I know that's a while away, but I look for other Crime Watch groups to begin to meet with more regularity than we have certainly over the past year. And as always, if you see something that just does not seem right, please call 911 because community is not just about me, it's about us. And I'll continue with the Capital Improvements Board. We did meet last Monday. We discussed a format for funding, tracking funding, and we were presented with a project request form for residents. There was some discussion about having a request form for each of the council people or other department heads who would come before us. Our controller, Megan, talked about a projection report for projects and the casino funding distribution. There is, there was a request made of the Sanitary District for $260,000 for a project on Schneider. Due to a main break near the Kennedy Avenue Pumping Station, the Sanitary District is kind of holding off on committing to that cost-sharing effort until they find out exactly what the main break is going to entail. And we also approved $121,526.52 for Phase 1 of the Chicago Street Construction Engineering. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 5. At this point in time, we have no business that will come before the Capital Improvements Board, but we will still have a work-study session at 4:00 PM, and that is on April 5. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
We haven't met yet, but we are in the process of planning another Police and Fire Committee meeting coming up soon. Just on the agenda, I want to share that we will be discussing the return of the Explorer program through the Hammond Police Department as well as the openings that they have and are looking to fill for other licensed, current licensed officers from other departments who want to become Hammond Police Officers. And then the last thing I'll share is that I want to give my condolences to Corporal Woods and the entire Hammond Police Department on the loss of his K-9 partner. Jet came down with cancer relatively quickly and had to be put down over, I think the timing was about two months. Jet was a member of HPD for seven or eight years, and was actually coming up on retirement over the next couple of months. So he was the oldest dog in the K-9 unit and was just a, I mean, just a top-notch K-9 and partner for Corporal Woods. So I want to give my condolences to Corporal Woods and the entire Hammond Police Department on their loss.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Anything on the committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number eight, ordinance third and final reading.
Ordinance number 21-09, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2021 Gaming Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2109.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines for final passing and adoption of ordinance 2109, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this ordinance is a... Yes, this ordinance, uh, is appropriating funds from, uh, various different balances that were left over from, uh, 2020, uh, and they will be appropriated to the 2021 accounts.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the ordinance passed, ordinance number 2109 passes, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Moving on, item number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 21-10, sponsored by Councilman Tyler, and it's the petition from the Hammond Board of Parks Commissioners. An ordinance vacating a 66-foot portion of 600 and 700 block of Eaton Street and the 5,800 block of Madison, also known as Windrich Avenue, in the city of Hammond Lake County,
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yes, I move that we, uh, push, uh, ordinance 21 dash into first and second reading, or first and second, yeah, first and second reading, sorry, uh, and refer to a public hearing on April 12th, as well as, uh, council as a whole on that same day.
Council as a whole at 5:15, councilman? Is there any other discussion? Was there a second on that?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler for first and second reading, with a public hearing scheduled on April 12th, with, uh, a committee hearing of council as a whole at 5:00, 5:15 PM. Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Uh, just so the public knows, this ordinance, uh, is coming out of a relationship agreement with the school city of Hammond to vacate, um, a portion of Eaton Street and Windrich Avenue, um, in between the back of the civic center and the, um, the alleyway up against, uh, Erie Street, so that the school city of Hammond can use this, uh, for sports facility for the new high school. Um, not sure when, uh, demolition or, or construction is going to, to begin, but I know we are in the final stages of this agreement, so hopefully we'll start seeing some movement on that soon, so that they can utilize this in their first year of existence in the fall. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 21-11, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. The petitioner is the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 2642 New York Avenue.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, as the meeting set for April 12th at 5:25. Also to the, uh, there will be an intent to consider for the April 12th, 21, 2021 meeting also.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali for council as a whole on April 12th at 5:25 with an intent to consider, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, resolutions, there are none. Item number 11, new and unfinished business. Does anyone have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, I would like to remind our residents that, uh, dog tags are, uh, coming due on March 31st. Uh, you can, uh, get the application online or you can go to, uh, the controller's office and, uh, get your dog tags, March 31st.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, I, I do owe the, uh, residents of, uh, North Hammond, uh, an apology for not bringing this up at the last meeting, uh, but our meeting on February 22nd, uh, Suzette Kabaki, uh, brought to our attention a liquor license transfer that was going to go in her neighborhood at 3915 Holman Avenue. And, uh, thanks to the, uh, neighborhood coming together, they received over 300, um, signatures on a petition to remonstrate against the transfer of that license. Councilman Kalwinski was very involved in this effort as well, and, uh, what ended up happening was the petitioner, uh, withdrew his request. So, uh, I just wanted to point out that, uh, a neighborhood can, can have an effect on, uh, how things transpire in their neighborhood. And their voice was certainly heard, uh, in, in the area of 3915 Holman Avenue. So congratulations to the neighborhood and, um, uh, thank you for your efforts in keeping your neighborhood a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, we have one person present and he doesn't, he hasn't signed to speak. I'll ask anybody on Zoom if they want to speak and to remind them that it's their opportunity to speak for three minutes and address the council. It's not a back-and-forth between the person asking the question and the council. Does anybody wish to speak on Zoom?
Hi, Duke, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, George.
Am I too loud?
Uh, you sound okay.
Okay, I've tried to work that mic. Yeah, uh, getting, uh, what was I talking about? With respect to the credit cards, uh, used to bank payments on the water bills, does this council contemplate, or will it contemplate, uh, adding the cost to our bill in some way and spreading it out to the, to the customers if, uh, some sort of satisfactory resolution can't be found? Uh, is this, is, is, in other words, is it, is it going to be just another added cost spread out over the citizens of Hammond? Uh, I'm a little concerned about that. Also with respect to Cargill, uh, God, I'd like to get a little more detail. I've, uh, interacted with him or tried to, tried to interact with Ron Novak, and he's pretty much a, uh, an advocate for, uh, Cargill, and, uh, that invasive noise and vibration be damned. Uh, so, uh, they think that they're immunized by state law. I disagree with it. I even submitted a mellow to them on it. Um, and there's other issues that I don't want to get into right here, but, uh, now that, uh, they think they should be. And it's just basically the fiat of, uh, the lack of the city's enforcement of, of some of these noise ordinances and nuisances. So, uh, if you've ever experienced it, it's so invasive, it goes through your house, through your bricks, it gets right into your living room. It's not just something that bounces off your house or if you get into the car. Um, it's, uh, really truly invasive and it shouldn't be tolerated. I don't know how the people, uh, and it's just started, it hasn't, I've been in Robertsdale for at least 20 years, and, uh, it was never like that. This is a new phenomenon, relatively speaking, and I hope, uh, truly wish, uh, Mark, uh, does something effective and somehow enlists the aid of Ron up there at Environmental to, uh, come out on behalf of the citizens and not just big business. Thank you.
Thank you, George, and if you stick around after the meeting's over, I can answer the first part of your question.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Talon?
It was, or just Phil, either one of those two.
You may, you have three minutes, you have three minutes.
I just wanted to say that, uh, in regards to, uh, Mr. Stoyas' comments about the credit card fees at, at staff this morning, we did hear from the Water Department that they have come up with a solution, uh, in which, uh, not only will the residents not have to cover any of the costs for the, uh, fees for using a credit card, but also the city, uh, might actually be charged a cheaper rate, uh, because we are a public utility. So they are finalizing those details right now, so it should be a, uh, a win-win for the residents and for, um, and for the city. And also in regards to Cargill, uh, as Councilman Kalwinski stated earlier, I heard he has a meeting, uh, with, uh, Mr. Lawson from Cargill, uh, myself and Ron Novak have a meeting with him on Thursday, uh, so we also will be following up on whatever Councilman Kalwinski and, and Mr. Lawson speak about tomorrow. So this, uh, this issue is not going away and we definitely are going to make sure we , uh, address it one way or the other.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in public expression? Does anybody else wish to speak in public expression? Seeing none, public expression is closed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Have a good night.